Yep.
That's good.
Do you have access to the other, this should be planning commissioners as well?
Jessica Kieris speaks with your.
Yeah.
You could elevate everybody except Bill Cobalik. He may speak under public comment. Thank you, Ms. Mandy. And then all of knowledge.
Good evening, commissioners. I think we're ready to start the meeting. Chair Karas.
All right. It is now 5:32. It is February 24th, 2022. And so I will call this regular meeting of the Deschutes County and Planning Commission to order. We will begin with the approval of minutes from January 13th and February 10th of 2022. These minutes from these meetings have previously been distributed. Are there any corrections to the minutes that haven't been already submitted? See anyone's hands? Okay, so if there are no corrections, then the minutes are approved and we can proceed with the next item, which is public comment. So let's see here on participants. Looks like we do have a few attendees. Are there any members of the public who wish to make a comment about anything that is not on the agenda tonight?
Chip Karas, this is Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. Can we get a motion to approve both minutes and then that would be helpful for us?
Yeah, so I think that Les, former Chair Hudson, had determined from his reading of Robert's rules and my subsequent reading that we don't actually have to have a formal motion to approve the minutes.
Just getting that on the record. Thank you. With this being your, I think this is the first set of minutes that you've established as chair. So that's great. And then I think we have, do we have?
Oh, Commissioner Crawford would like to add something.
Great.
Can we hear her? Oh, you're muted. You're muted. Can you unmute? There we go. Yes.
I'm kind of old school on the whole minute thing. And I really, it's my personal opinion, I would like to see motions to accept the minutes. I think it's only appropriate. I was, I have to be honest, I was a bit disgruntled for the last year that we didn't have motions to approve the minutes. It just seems a formality to me, but I think it's a fairly essential one when we're dealing with a committee like this. And that's solely my opinion.
Well, I appreciate you, your opinion and also your past experience. I will ask the members of the planning commission, is there anyone who feels strongly that we should not go back to the process of having a motion? And in other words, is there anyone who objects to Dale's suggestion that we do do this formally with a motion?
Madam Chairman, Steve Swisher. I agree with Dale and I would support that idea. And given that, I'd move that we approve the minutes as presented for the weeks of January 13th and February 10th.
Is there a second? Okay, let's have a formal vote. I will ask each person in turn. Let's see, Commissioner Williams, you're on mute and we don't see, I don't see your picture.
I am having problems with my camera right now, so I will approve. Yay.
Yay, okay. Commissioner Altman.
I vote yay as well.
Okay. Commissioner Swisher.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Crawford.
Yes.
Okay. And I will also vote to approve the minutes. See, and I believe I did get everyone. So it is unanimous, the minutes from January 13th and February 10th, 2022 are now approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me ask Trevor, our producer, as we transition to public comment, if there's a show of hands for anybody who wants to speak on a matter that's not on the agenda. Trevor, do we see a show of hands of anybody?
None of us.
Great. I don't know if you heard that, Commissioner, Chair Karas, sorry, I may have overstepped my bounds just trying to keep us on the agenda, but there is no, no one who's expressing interest for public comment.
Okay. And tonight's meeting is not a public hearing. Because we have a very full agenda, we do welcome members of the public to participate through observing. That's our primary purpose tonight with our water panel is to be learning about the issues involved. But I will check with my fellow commissioners to see if anyone objects to this plan, but I think it would be best for us to actually not take public comment this evening on any of the three action items. But I'm hoping that members of the public will be very interested in noting what they may want to comment about with the issue of, any of the issues on the agenda later, especially with respect to water, which will be a very important part of our comprehensive plan update process. So there will be lots of opportunity for public input, but I'm suggesting that maybe for tonight, since it's a very full agenda, that we kind of stick with discussion from the planning commission. Does anyone feel strongly that this is not a good idea? Okay. So again, members of the public, thank you for being here and please do note your comments, concerns, questions for our future discussions. We will now proceed to the next item, which is our first action item, the Water Resource Discussion Panel. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Kyle Collins to go ahead and introduce our panelists.
Absolutely. Good evening, commissioners. For the record, Kyle Collins, Associate Planner. Chair Karas already pointed out a little bit, this is the first of two water discussion panels that we're, we have slated before the planning commission. The second one's going to occur at some point in April. But for this particular panel, we have three professionals and experts dealing in the realm of water resources. Here tonight, we have Dr. Stephen Gingrich with the U.S. Geologic Survey, Bridget Moran of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and finally, we have Kyle Gorman of the Oregon Water Resources Department. As the commissioners would have seen in their packet, we have sort of a tentative schedule of how this is going to operate. Each of the panelists is going to provide a brief introduction, presentation and discussion item, about 10 to 15 minutes per panelist, and then we'll move into a more open-ended discussion format amongst all of the panelists as well as the planning commissioners. And with that, I'll open it up to any general questions that planning commissioners might have before we move into the presentations. All right. Looks like no pressing questions. And so with that, I'll turn it over to our first panelist up for presentation, which is Dr. Stephen Gingrich.
Hey, thank you. All right, there's the presentation. Hi, my name's Steve Gingrich. I'm a research hydrologist with the USGS. We're based out of Portland. And I put together a little talk just to kind of talk about the history of the work, groundwater work that the USGS has done in the area, just to give you some basics of, you know, some of the findings we've made over the years and a general description of, you know, how we believe groundwater is working in the area. So kind of a summary, you know, we've been working in the basin, you know, since the 1990s, you know, in the 1990s timeframe, we did a lot of, you know, the basic groundwork of, you know, understanding the geology of the area and the groundwater hydrology where groundwater is coming from, the recharge, the discharge, how it moves and so on. And that was kind of the framework of understanding, you know, what's going on for groundwater in the basin. And then roughly in the 2000s, we started working on developing groundwater flow models. And these are, they're tools that we can use to kind of, to simulate what's going on in the groundwater system. And with tools like that, we can look at the impacts of pumping and irrigation canals and climate, changing climate, things like that. So that kind of roughly during the 2000s, that was sort of the work we were doing. And in the most recent decade, the 2010s, we kind of stepped it up and came up with a, kind of an enhanced surface water, groundwater model that's very useful. It's much more complicated, but it's useful in looking at things like the effect of pumping groundwater on streams and how that might reduce base flow in these streams. So that's kind of roughly, you know, the last 30 years worth of work that the USGS has been doing in the basin. And our work essentially boils down to figuring out, you know, what's, what's the groundwater budget? You know, how much water is getting into the system? How much is discharging from the system? In simple terms, we need to figure out the inflow, that's what we call recharge, you know, water getting in from rain and snowmelt. The outflow is water taken out of the system that discharges naturally into streams and springs, water that's taken out of the system through plants, like we call that evapotranspiration, and of course pumping, which can be a major, you know, outflow from the system. And when those inflows and outflows are in balance, you know, the water levels, the storage in the aquifer is kind of steady, it doesn't move much. But if we increase pumpage, you know, or if we take more water out than is going in, like your bank account, your, 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 your storage is going to go down. For a bank account, you know, you're going to have less money. For a groundwater system, you're going to have less groundwater in the aquifer. And we see that by declining water levels in wells. That's the main way we can measure the health of the aquifers, looking at groundwater levels. So, you know, some of the early studies were spent figuring out, you know, what's the recharge? We look at the amount of rain and snow, the figure on the left, you know, the darker green colors represent areas of high recharge, you know, in the upper cascades where you get more rain and snow. And as you get down in the, in the lower elevations, there's much less recharge coming into the system. So, you know, it takes a lot of effort, you know, to figure these things out. And besides the rain and snow, another way of getting recharge into the system is through irrigation by agriculture. So the map on the right is just showing some of the different agricultural areas. And if you look closely, there, there's a lot of the canals in there. And one of the early findings was that, that the canals, the irrigation canals divert a lot of water and nearly something like 46% of the diverted water actually would leak back through the canal bottoms and recharge the aquifer beneath it. So we figure out, you know, groundwater recharge, how much is getting into the system? And then the next thing to figure out is, you know, how is groundwater moving? And groundwater typically is going to flow from areas of higher recharge, higher groundwater head to the areas with lower groundwater head. And this map here just has some arrows basically pointing the, the general groundwater flow directions from, from the areas in the Cascades and Newberry Volcano that get the most recharge. And groundwater is generally flowing northward towards the northern part of the basin where it discharges at, at streams and rivers. So, you know, another big effort is to measure, you know, this is based on measurements of many, many wells in the area over time, and we contour that data up and figure out which way groundwater is moving. And then finally, once the groundwater moves through the system, it's going to discharge. So these figures here kind of represent some of the measurements and things we do to figure out how groundwater is discharging from, from the aquifer system. So the picture on the bottom right is kind of a cross section down the profile of the Deschutes River. And on the left side of the figure is kind of the recharge area where groundwater is getting into the system. It flows, in this case, to the north, down through the permeable rocks. As it flows under Bend, you know, the water table is, is fairly deep below the ground surface. And this is an area where the Deschutes River would be losing water down into the groundwater system. And as we move further north along the river, we get to a point where the geology causes the groundwater to flow, sort of flow upward and discharge back into the river. And we call it, and this is a discharge zone up in the Deschutes and where, like where Metolius, the Metolius River starts and the Crooked River, where they all kind of come together is an area of major groundwater discharge. And the figure on the top left is a profile showing measurements of stream flow in the, in the river, kind of to demonstrate that. So as we move downstream from Bend towards like the Pelton Dam area, the flow in the river is fairly uniform and might actually be losing small bits of water down into the groundwater system. But when we get downstream to like the Steelhead Falls area and south of that, this figure shows a much higher groundwater flow in that area. So that's, that's how we're able to determine, you know, the kind of the endpoint of the groundwater system where groundwater is discharging. And we know from, you know, all these studies, you know, that this, this whole system is connected from the Cascades down through the aquifer beneath Bend and Redmond and where it discharges in the Deschutes. It's all one, you know, major groundwater system and it's not really divided into aquifers for, you know, different parts, different towns or different wells. It's all, it's all connected. So pumping water from one part of the aquifer can impact, you know, other parts of the aquifer further, further downstream or further down gradient. So those are kind of like the building blocks of what we figure out, you know, how groundwater is, is occurring in the system. And then when we build these groundwater models, we can use them to ask these what-if scenarios, you know, what happens if we pump more? What happens if climate changes? What if we stop irrigation, things, you know, what-if questions? So the models that we've built are very helpful for that. And these are some plots from some of the reports, from the early modeling reports showing on the left side is a plot of the area and the colored areas represent places where the water level is, has drawn down, where it's lower due to increased pumping. So all the red circles represent, you know, different wells that are pumping different rates. And as you can see where all the wells are clustered, that's where most of the drawdown in the aquifer, you know, has, has been measured. So, you know, the more pumping you get, likely the more drawdown you're going to get in that area. And you can see, you know, the, the drawdown cones, we call them, are fairly widespread across more of the northern part of the system due to the pumping in the area. And another thing we could look at with that, the models, was the, the effect of the canals. As I mentioned, you know, nearly 50% of the water put in those canals for irrigation was found to leak back through the canals and recharge the groundwater system. So the, the map on the right depicts a what-if scenario, like what if we stopped all that water from leaking through the system, but, you know, say by lining the canal? And that shows the areas where water levels would actually drop due to the lack of, you know, irrigation water leaking back from the canals. So you would also get sort of drawdown cones or lower water level areas due to lack of leakage from the canals into the system. So the groundwater models are really helpful for kind of playing these game, these what-if games and figuring out the different components and how they, how they interact with each other. And another useful tool that is still being used is, is to look at the effects of wells on, say, stream flow, for instance. So this was an example from one of the studies published in 2017 where they put in a hypothetical well, say where that green dot is on the map there, and pumped it at a, you know, kind of a, a normal expected rate. And then they looked over time at the effect of streams down gradient of that well. And when you, when you pump this well, it captures water that would have discharged as base flow, you know, or low summer flows into these streams. So all the, the segments of the rivers, the, on the Crooked River and the Deschutes and to the west there of the, of the well, these are areas that would be impacted by pumping this one particular well. So, and so whenever you're going to put a well in and pump it, you know, there's going to be a, an equal reaction by the groundwater system. So you're, you're going to, you're going to take water from somewhere. In this case, the model can show us where that water would be taken from as it's withdrawn by the well. So that's kind of some of the studies, you know, that we've done over the years to basically figure out the groundwork of how it works, use the models to predict different situations and how things might change. And one of the other things that was looked at, we all hear about, you know, a changing climate. Some of the studies put out that predict, you know, how rainfall and snowfall is going to change in the future, were kind of plugged into the recharge calculations that we did to look at how recharge might change in the future. And this, and from this study published in 2013, the bottom line was there'd be less snowpack during the winter months. So you could see the arrows. So on the top, the top graph shows plots from the 1980s progressing through the 2080s. And essentially, we have less snowpack, you know, each, each decade as we go on during the winter. The middle plot shows that we're going to have earlier runoff because we have less snowpack. The amount of precipitation that we're expected to get isn't really expected to change that much, but the timing of it will. And if it's warmer, we're going to get a lot, a lot of the precipitation will fall as rain instead of snow and it won't build up the snowpack. So it will have, the earlier months where it would have been stored as snow is actually going to run off sooner. So we'll have more runoff in the, in the December, January, February timeframe and less runoff later in the spring because of that. And then finally, in the, in the bottom plot, we're showing how that translates into the recharge component. And we're probably likely to have more recharge in, again, in those early winter months because there's more rain and less water stored in the snow, but then less recharge in, in the springtime. So that, these are kind of the results of one of the, of taking the, you know, the, the future climate models and running them through the recharge calculations. And one last plot of that, just showing a kind of a distribution that kind of, as I said, there'd be more, these are plots, the, the left side shows winter recharge and the blue means that there's going to be an increase, you know, a higher percent of the recharge is going to happen in the winter months. And on the right side, the summer months are actually going to have less recharge occurring during those times because of the warmer temperatures, more evapotranspiration and less rainfall at those times and less runoff. Again, these are all kind of model predictions of what the future might hold. And then finally, this plot kind of talks about the distribution of that. And what that's going to mean for stream flow is in the, in the upper, in the upper watersheds along the left side here in the Cascades, this is showing the percentage of change. So as much as 25 to 27% more water in, again, in the winter months, January, February, March. But in the summer months, there, you know, 10 to 15 or more percent less water flowing in the streams at that time. So there's going to be, especially in the upper watersheds, there'll be more winter flow, but less summer flow, which may have impacts on, you know, aquatic life in the streams. And as we move down to the bottom of the groundwater system, you know, in the Deschutes and Crooked River, Whites' Creek area, that, that effect will be much more subdued, will have just a few percentage points difference between the, the summer and winter recharge. So this, this impact kind of shows really the, the upper watersheds will have the biggest impact from this possibly changing, you know, recharge conditions. So that's kind of a, an overview of what's, you know, what's been done in the past by the USGS in the basin. You know, currently, the USGS is working with the Bureau of Reclamation. They have a, a surface water routing model called MOD SIM. And we're currently working with them to couple that model with our groundwater, surface water model to have an even more robust tool to look, to look at water routing and, you know, how that affects the surface water and groundwater. And that, that's still in development and probably, you know, a few years out till that, till that gets developed and published. And then finally, you'll hear more from OWRD, but they're, they're still currently using the, the surface water, groundwater model we've developed. When they want to evaluate, you know, new pumping centers or new pumping wells, they'll, they'll run a simulation with that well in there and then look at the model results of how that impacts the, you know, streams and base flow and springs in the area. So that, that's, that's some ongoing work with, with the models that the USGS has developed. And kind of to finish up, I threw in a plot of some, one of the wells that the USGS monitors, this is up by, you know, the Black Butte area, just to show the current groundwater condition with time. That's, that's kind of on the right side there. The, the, the red part is the, the most recent values. And show, you know, the water levels have been declining since about, you know, 2014, 2015 in this particular well. This is a well kind of, again, near, up near the, the, away from all the pumping centers. So it's, it's mostly showing just a climate influence. And you can see that we're approaching some of the times in the past where we had some of the lowest levels, you know, in the, in the 1995, 96 timeframe. Then again, in 2004, 2005, we had some very low water level periods. And, and this current period, we're sort of moving down towards that point again. So yeah, so that just kind of gives you a flavor of some of the groundwater work or some of the groundwater records that we're measuring right now. And then finally, this isn't about groundwater, but I just wanted to, to, to give you information of the other work that the USGS has been doing in the basin lately is looking at, you know, some water quality work with Fish and Wildlife and the Bureau of Reclamation. A lot of streams, we've been working with Watershed Council on some restoration projects. There's some geology work going on around Newberry Volcano and some flooding work that has been working on with the Sisters area as well, looking at dam failure. So just to say that, you know, the USGS has still got some, you know, stuff going on and I'm not really going to talk about that, but if, you know, if anybody needs to hear about this, you know, let me know and we can, I can point you to the right person if, if any of these other topics, you know, are become relevant to you guys. And I think I'm ready to stop there.
Excellent. Thank you very much. That was an excellent presentation. I learned a lot already. I do have some questions of my own, but I see that Commissioner Swisher has his hand raised, so let's hear from him.
Yes, that groundwater, surface water model that you described, that was really interesting. But I wonder if there's any context about wastewater recovery, like the Crooked River, finishing marshes, as well as some of the efforts going by Ben's sewer recovery and finishing marshes, et cetera. Does that have any part of your model about wastewater recovery?
As far as I recall, I don't think so at all. I think that's probably newer than when this model was developed. It certainly can be used to look at that, but I don't think it was up until this point.
Thank you.
So what other questions do we have? Commissioner Altman?
Chair.
Commissioner Williams will be next. Sorry, go ahead.
I agree. Great presentation. Thank you. I had a question about, so there's a discussion briefly about lining or piping of the canals, which I know is going on right now in a few irrigation districts. And the usability, my question is about the usability of reach- And the usability, my question is about the usability of recharge of water that, of seepage from the irrigation districts. Is there a measure of, how do I say this? The time at which the seepage becomes available and where is it available? So I represent East of Bend and sort of out to Alfalfa. And I know that there are a number of people out in Alfalfa who are worried about lining the canals, especially if they would go on their properties because their wells have been needing to be re-drilled. And so I wonder how quickly is seepage available? And how much volume is available that people might be losing in their wells because of piping?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't think I have the answer for the first part as far as the timing. I think, you know, it's not, it's not unknowable. I just, I think for the purposes of the model, it was sort of just really looking at, okay, if we stop it, you know, this much water won't be getting into the system, and this is the effect it's going to be. But it didn't really look at the, the timing of the movement through the, you know, the rock to get down to the water table. So I can't really answer that very intelligently at this point. But, you know, it's going to be a, sort of a one-to-one look as far as how much water you, you know, whatever water you stop from leaking, you know, from the irrigation ditches is, you know, going to be the amount that causes the water level declines in, in the region. So it's a fairly straightforward, you know, calculation, I guess. I just, I don't know the numbers offhand.
Looks like Kyle Gorman would maybe like to add to this?
Oh, okay.
Certainly. So in one of those early USGS reports, a couple of the observation wells that were outfitted with recorders, so they had continuous recorders. One well was near the Arnold Canal, and then another one was near the Schuets River. And the response from the canal operation was fairly rapid in a matter of days, where a canal would turn on and you'd see a water level response in a 600-foot-deep well. I can't tell you which report that's in, but it's in one of those reports that were produced by the USGS. So it's fairly rapid. And my back of the envelope total has always been about 1/7 of the total recharge in the Schuets aquifer system is from leakage from canals.
Thank you. Let's see, Commissioner Williams, did you have a comment, a question?
I'm not sure where this would be applicable, and I do apologize. I have tried to look, and my camera no longer exists on my computer. So I'm going to have to be blacked out. But reducing canal leakage equals lower groundwater levels. And I don't know, you know, who might this question be for. But is there like a feasibility? And I know a lot of folks would lose their visual appeal, but capping the canals, but not lining them so that the water is staying in, but then also still has that ability to go into the ground, but not evaporate as much or something? I don't know. That was just kind of a thought that came up when I, when I heard, when I saw that one slide.
Would anyone like to respond to that question, any of our panelists? Kyle Gorman?
So believe it or not, in central Oregon, evaporation is a very minor portion of canal loss. The seepage into the ground is so much greater. It's anywhere from 500 to 1,000 times greater seepage into the ground over covering the canal. So really, covering a canal is virtually ineffective, other than safety.
Thank you. That's good to know. Okay, let's see. I think I'm going to save my questions, a couple of questions for, for the end after we've heard from the other two panelists. Kyle Collins, who did you envision would be next?
Sure. Why don't we go, since we've already heard from Kyle Gorman with the Oregon Water Resources Department, why don't we open it back up to Kyle, and he can give his, his overview of his work?
Thank you. So Kyle Gorman, I'm the region manager for Oregon Water Resources Department. We're a state agency that primary responsibility is to regulate, regulation and distribution of water among waterright holders throughout the state. The state's broken into watermaster districts. And I happen to oversee the Schuets Watermaster District, the Klamath Basin, and the majority of Lake County. And so within those three areas, there's actually four watermasters. We have a new, newly created watermaster district in the Crooked River. So that, that person will be getting their feet wet, so to speak, this, this year. And it'll be a good year to start. So I've been working in Water Resources Department just under 32 years. I started out as a technician here in Bend. And believe it or not, I was making, performing some of the measurements that went into the USGS groundwater study. So I was one of those folks that was out in the field making the stream flow measurements for the seepage analysis back in the day. So one thing that I want to note is that the GS, or these groundwater studies, were a cooperative study between the Oregon Water Resources Department and the US Geological Survey with the counties in the area and the Warm Springs Tribe. So it was a, it was a cooperative study from multiple sources of funding. So it was a, it was a big deal and very comprehensive in the, gaining the understanding of the groundwater system in the basin. Currently, I am the region manager. I've been in this position since 2001. So I oversee the watermaster, the regulation on the Schuets River, Crooked River, and watermastering in those other two counties. I don't have a presentation tonight. My, the theme I wanted to present tonight is kind of where are we at? Present-day conditions, what are we looking at? What's the water supply? We've actually been in fairly extreme weather over the last couple of years. And water supplies have been extremely low over these couple of years. And I want to kind of illustrate what, what we're seeing. So if I can share my screen, I'm hoping, hoping this works. But one of the things that I noticed when Dr. Gingrich was showing his, his slides were just the same size as one of our, our heads, and it was kind of hard to see. So I'm hoping that doesn't happen with me. So if I share my screen, hopefully, folks can see a red, nasty red map of Oregon. Is that correct?
Quite well, yeah.
Okay. So this is, this map is the drought indices for Oregon. They actually, the National Drought Resource has a map of the entire United States. But I zeroed in on Oregon, of course, because that's where we're really interested. And you can see that through the center part of the state, we are in what's called exceptional drought, the D4 status, which is the worst drought conditions in this, in this setting. This drought designation of D4 has been in place for probably close to a year now. It was, the exceptional drought area was slightly larger. This winter did reduce that area. It kind of moved it away from the Cascades. But you can still see that all of Creek County and the eastern portion of Schuets County are in that D4 exceptional drought situation. And this condition that we're in right now was, and has been persistent over time. The, you know, the amount, the last summer's heat, heat dome, heat wave that we had, the general dry characteristics of the majority of the year, and the amount of snow and rain that we've received this winter has not moved the bar out of this drought condition. So I just want to emphasize the fact that even though, despite having some snow this year, the, the conditions throughout the majority of the central part of the state are still in this exceptional drought condition. Now, there should be a nicely colored graph, hopefully. So this, this graphic shows historical snowpack in the Schuets Basin. And I want to note that water managers use a 30-year period of record for average conditions. Some people call it normal, but there's never normal weather. I always call it, I like to call it average. Or in this case, they have median conditions. So the middle, the middle value, just so happens that that median value was updated for 1990 to 2020. And it also just so happens that that period of time had a slightly drier average than the previous 30-year period, which was 1980 to 2010. So we have a average condition here that plots slightly below where the previous median would have. So our, our numbers, based on how close we are to average, are actually less than they would have been a year ago with the previous median, if that makes sense. And I don't know if you can see this, but this, there's a red X, or excuse me, a green X right there. And that's the former peak snowpack for the Schuets Basin. And you can see the, the distance between it and the green line is that change in the median. They haven't updated the graph to, to, to move that down, I'm assuming. What we're seeing here is the red line on the bottom is the record-low snowpack. And the bluish-purple line on the top is the record snowpack in the basin. These are based on the automated snowtell sites that are in, sprinkled around the Cascades and, and three of them, which are out in the Ochcos, and one just north of Burns. So this captures the mountain snowpack. And it's our critical water supply for irrigation and recharge into the aquifer systems. The black line here is this year. And you can see that the first part of December, I was starting to sweat because we were in record-low territory. And then I was in a blissful enjoyment for several weeks until about January 6th. And then the rain stopped. And we had no precipitation for almost seven weeks during the month of January and, and a good portion of February, which is horrendous for our water supply because we depend on these December, January, and February months as the peak months of precipitation for a snowpack. So where it left us today is we're about 86% of average, well below average and well below the new average for snowpack. So there's a little bit of time, but every day that goes by, we have less and less of a chance to recover from, once again, another below-average snow, snowpack. One of the things that has left me scratching my head is this blue line here is last year. You can see that last year was actually above average. So it wasn't really a bad year, but the runoff, resulted runoff last year was almost record-low in some places. And so the two just don't make sense. And my only conclusion is that the snow that was there did not melt and runoff. It either sublimated or evaporated. I'm not sure. So I've, we still haven't solved this mystery about water supply last year. Next graph here is WikiUp Reservoir. And currently, it is at an all-time low. So WikiUp Reservoir was constructed in 1947, and the water level at this date has never been lower. Last year, this green line here was the lowest. And then this year has set the new low. So the water supply for the North Unit Irrigation District comes from WikiUp Reservoir. And last year was the lowest water delivery to that district. And since the reservoir was built, this year will probably be similar to extreme low water levels and low water supply to that irrigation district. I don't anticipate it to, the reservoir to recover any amount above last year and probably will be low once again. So if anybody's been up to WikiUp Reservoir in the last few years, late in the season, September, they've seen the reservoir as low as it ever has been. So we're, these cumulative effects of multiple dry years are showing up fairly pronounced at WikiUp Reservoir. I think I have one more graph here. This is, this is a, a new monitoring site that OWRD operates. We actually have, Oregon Water Resources Department owns property in between Bend and Redmond. We probably acquired it through a default on a carryout development and segregation back in the early 1900s. It was part of the development of the irrigation systems in central Oregon. And somehow, I don't know exactly how, but the department acquired this property. And we, we actually paid for a driller to drill a monitoring well on the site. So it's, the property is just east of the solar panel area that's in between Redmond and Bend. So it's out in the, out in the juniper trees out there. But this, the well was drilled in spring of 2020. And so we have a, a short water level record. But what you can see is we are in a decline of the water table of a couple of feet over the last two years. The neat thing about this well is that hopefully we'll have this record for the next 50 years. The department has no plans of selling the property and developing it. And there's very little use around it. So it really gives a great picture of what the water table's doing without anthropogenic influences pumping nearby. And so it's, it's a great site. And I'm just really happy that we have something like this that we can, that we can rely on into the future about the water table in, in central Oregon. And then my last graph, and I borrowed this from the USGS. This is the well that's, that Dr. Gingrich showed near Black Butte Ranch. Although I don't have the complete record for this well. It starts in 2001, and we saw that decline. But the one thing I want to contrast this with, with the one I just showed you was that this well also is not influenced by pumping and is responsive to recharge events and wetter cycles very rapidly. And so we had a wet cycle, in, fairly wet cycle, in the 2010 to 2018. But then the last few years, we've seen a fairly steady decline in the groundwater system. One of the things that we do, as well as regulate water, is we operate stream gauging stations all over the state. The department operates about 250 gauges. About 60 of those are in the Schuets Basin. As well as operating gauging stations, since 2006, we've been monitoring the discharge of the Metolius River Springs at the headwaters. We make quarterly measurements there. Our observations in the 2014, 2015 time, the discharge of the springs was about 120 cubic feet per second. Our last measurement, just a few, about a month ago, we measured 52 CFS. So the discharge of the Metolius River Springs has dropped by 50%. And so that's just another indicator of drier conditions, the climate signal of the lack of recharge, and lowering of water table in the groundwater systems. So that's kind of reflective of all over the Schuets Basin. So with that depressing news, that's, that's all I have as far as graphs and the information that I wanted to share with you. Happy to take some questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from the commissioners at this time? Commissioner Alt, or Vice Chair Altman?
Thank you. That is depressing news. If things stayed on the same trajectory as they are headed right now, at what point do we run out of water? I mean, how, how much water is aquifer? How long can we go on the way we are, considering also the development that continues to happen in the county with more people moving here and increased, you know, demands for population and...
Those are good questions, very good questions. And it also depends on what your source is. And so the, the groundwater system, although we're seeing these declines, it's, it's a very thick aquifer, and its supply is very great. And so if you look at the amount... at the amount of water that's pumped out of the aquifer compared to the, the supply for the aquifer, it's a very small percentage, a couple of percent. And so pumping groundwater and human use of water is actually pretty minimal, uh, from the overall standpoint of the water budget in the basin. So the Deschutes River at Madras flows roughly 4 million acre-feet a year. And, uh, you know, human use is roughly, let's say, 60,000 acre-feet. So that's all the water that's pumped out of the ground. And so 60,000 versus 4 million, that's kind of the, the difference in the water supply, or the, the water budget. And these are very rough numbers. So I'm just trying to give you a relative scale of things. However, the Deschutes River is nearly entirely diverted during the entire summer at Bend. And so we have a, a flow of about 2,000 cubic feet per second flowing into Bend, and about 100 cubic feet per second leaving. The irrigation districts use about 700 to 800,000 acre-feet a year. And so 60,000 for humans, 800,000 for irrigation, and 4 million for the river flowing into the Columbia. So water supply for irrigation, depending on the district, is very limited in these drought situations. Water supply for humans, for cities, um, is robust, uh, and it's not in jeopardy. And if people would stop watering their lawns, uh, we could, not that I want to, but we could support many, many more people. It's the watering of lawns are the biggest use in a municipal system in the summertime. Uh, the city of Bend's water use goes up about five-fold in the summer compared to its wintertime use. And so lawn watering, uh, is one of the biggest users of water in a municipal system. So it's just, it's irrigation, just like in irrigation districts, irrigating, you know, uh, in central Oregon, it's well over 100,000 acres. And so irrigation's a big use in central Oregon. Um, and, um, it's the most vulnerable when we come to these drought situations.
Commissioner Crawford?
Yes, a question for Kyle. Uh, what's the water table depth at the site between Bend and Redmond? What's, what's the depth of the water?
I think it was 490 feet.
Okay, great, thank you. And one more question. Um, what would the level of WikiUp be if we were not discharging more water for the spotted frog at this point in time?
Well, that's a good question. Uh, so over the last three or four years, I'm not sure how many, uh, the minimum outflow from WikiUp has gone from 20 cubic feet per second to 100 cubic feet per second. So that is an 80 CFS difference, and so roughly 160 acre-feet a day. So there's about a 20,000 to 30,000 acre-foot difference in, uh, how much is released in the wintertime. However, it hasn't filled for a number of years, and so, um, it, it was emptied. So the reservoir would only be today, if we were to go back to 20 CFS, it would have probably about 15,000 more acre-feet in it. It would have been, it would have been drained last year. And so had we kept the outflow at 20, we'd have about, I'm guessing, 15,000 acre-feet more.
Thank you.
So the releases have had an effect, but the drought has had much greater effect.
Okay, um, uh, Commissioner Swisher?
Um, why don't you move to, uh, Commissioner Williams while I refine my question?
Okay, excellent. Uh, Commissioner Williams?
So, uh, this has to do with the WikiUp discharge. I represent the South County. Uh, I live just outside of Sun River. I've lived here for well over 20 years. Last summer was the first time I've ever been aware of wells drying up in my area to where people had to have water, uh, hauled in. What, where do we think this problem is? Uh, if, if Bend is using up so much water in the summer, and they're getting it from us, how, why is, why, why do we have dry wells? And, and, and Bend doesn't, per se?
Um, so the Lapine Basin is a, geologically, it's somewhat different than the geology that you would encounter beneath Bend and, uh, and Redmond. The Lapine Basin is made up of very fine sediments, uh, silts and clays, uh, which is actually about 1,000 feet thick. And so the majority of the wells, uh, and the water table in the Lapine Basin is very shallow. And so many of the wells that are drilled in that basin are less than 30 feet deep. And given the extreme dryness over the last several years, the recharge in that area has been very low. And so these very shallow wells have, um, have been rendered dry in that the water table has dropped just a few feet and dropped below the pumps. And so, um, because of such dryness and lack of recharge in the winter, is the primary responsible, uh, um, factor in why there's been dry wells in the Lapine Basin. It really has nothing to do with how much water City of Bend is pumping.
And it doesn't matter what WikiUp is discharging. It's basically kind of what we absorb at each of our homes, per se.
Yeah, the, the amount of water that's discharged from WikiUp really has no bearing on, um, to any great degree of wells that are, uh, uh, in the Lapine Basin. There might be a few wells that are adjacent to the river that probably could be affected, but those would be just, you know, really close to the river.
But it is my neighbors with their acre-sized lawns that they water.
Yeah, well, we might, uh, have to talk about it in acre size. One-half acre is the limit.
Uh, I actually, yeah, I would have to, and that's interesting. I didn't know that because I live in a neighborhood of multi-acre properties, and there are literally acre and two-acre lawns. So if that information could be shared with me at a later date, that would be fantastic.
Um, Commissioner Swisher, are you ready?
I am. Uh, Kyle, I'm interested in that people use, again, that you're talking about versus agricultural use. And what happens as cities grow and urban growth boundaries expand, could you describe what did they have to go through to update their water rights? Are they different than any other person trying to get a new water right? Um, again, do municipalities have any preferences?
Uh, good question. There actually is a municipal preference, uh, when it comes to water law and municipalities. A municipality cannot lose the water right due to abandonment. So the forfeiture statutes don't apply to the cities. So anyway, that's, that's kind of what we call the municipal preference. However, in the Deschutes Basin, something I actually haven't even mentioned, but we could take another day to talk about this, is the, is the mitigation program that's in the Deschutes. Uh, as a result of those earlier groundwater studies and the, uh, realization that any pumping in the upper basin would affect the lower Deschutes, uh, there's been a mitigation program in place in the Deschutes Basin. It's unique to the state in that if a person wants a water right in the basin, and that's whether it's an individual or a city, to obtain that new water right, they have to mitigate their new use. And it's the consumptive use portion of the use that they have to mitigate for. And, uh, the, it's a fairly complicated system, but a city, and they do, they do have to mitigate for their new uses. So as the cities grow, uh, they have to obtain those, uh, mitigation credits and, uh, work in that program. Good question.
Thank you.
I'll tag on to that question, um, ask, this could be a question for really any of the panelists, but, um, in terms of development happening close to cities versus development happening spread out throughout the county, are there differences in the way that groundwater can be impacted, um, given those two differing patterns of development? Or is it basically like, it doesn't matter if you're putting the same number of houses clustered around a city versus dispersed throughout the county, it has the same impact on groundwater? Or are they very different?
Um, well, as a scientist, I might punt, punt that to, uh, Dr. Gingrich. One big well versus small wells, is there a difference?
And small wells dispersed throughout the county versus in one particular location? Yes. Um, did we lose Dr. Gingrich?
I'm here, if you can hear me.
Oh, you're in the room, that's why. I couldn't see you separately as a person there. Yeah, can you answer that or address that in any way?
Well, generally, um, we like to tout a distributed pumping versus all-concentrated. So, so yeah, uh, and the impact of, you know, one well that pumps a whole lot, it's going to have more drawdown, it might have more impact on nearby streams. But if you can disperse that pumping, you know, to many wells with less pumping, generally the, the immediate impacts surrounding that are, are less. So that's a good thing. But overall, you know, you're still taking the same amount of water out of the system. Uh, but you might be distributing the impacts, you know, and maybe in a, in a better way, right? You impact all the streams just a little bit versus impacting one stream, you know, a lot. So it, it, so yeah, I mean, uh, the cumulative impact, I would say, is the same, but, you know, specific areas would, would probably benefit from a more spread-out pumping distribution than all focused in one area.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see, who else do we maybe have? Anyone else have a question before we continue on with Bridget Moran? Hey, great discussion, everyone. Um, this is, I'm really learning a lot. Uh, let's move on to Bridget Moran and see what else we can learn.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, Bridget Moran with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. I did put together just a very short presentation to give an overview of, uh, the work that the Fish and Wildlife Service does and how it relates to some of the items you've just heard about. Um, I will caveat that by saying, um, one, thank you to the other two panelists. I also continue to learn every time I hear you guys talk, so thank you for that. Um, a lot of, the USGS presentation was around groundwater, and, um, that's fascinating. Um, I'll, I just want to be clear to the commission members that my discussion is mostly focused on surface water. So in the Deschutes River, in the streams and creeks that are, uh, surface water. So the, all of the modeling and the groundwater impacts, that is essential to our planning purposes and informs, um, you know, our thoughts on, on water availability. But just want to be clear, I'm talking about surface water almost exclusively. And I, uh, I'm going to try to share my screen, and let's see how that, uh, goes. Okay, you could let me know if you can see that, that would be great.
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, uh, that's just the upper part of, um, the upper Deschutes River. Just thought I'd share a beautiful part of, uh, the county. So, um, so what I wanted to, uh, there we go, um, just talk about just generally the Fish and Wildlife Service. So I'm with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, which is a federal agency, uh, not to be mixed up with our colleagues and counterparts at the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. And generally, the difference between our two agencies, um, is that the, the state agency has responsibility for the fish and wildlife resources of the state. Uh, they manage, uh, the hunting licenses and most of the conservation programs, and have primary responsibility for, uh, fish and wildlife conservation. And, uh, but there are certain times when the federal government or the, our agency, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, gets involved. And, uh, it's in some of these programs. So I, I'll just hit on those briefly. We have the Endangered Species Act, which I'm primarily going to talk about this evening. We also interact, um, though, with many members of the community and certainly, um, the county, um, regarding the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act. We do a tremendous amount of work in wildlife and habitat conservation, stream restoration, fish passage programs, et cetera, and all types of general wildlife technical assistance. Um, but I'm just primarily today going to focus on, um, the Endangered Species Act implementation, but just wanted to give you an idea of who we are and what we do. So, um, this is an area by, um, Lapine State Park, and a picture of one of the, um, uh, portions of the Deschutes River there. And, uh, the, one of the areas in particular that I wanted to explain, um, background on for the Endangered Species Act is that, uh, for all species that have been put on the endangered species list, and I'm happy to answer any form of questions about different portions of this, I just wanted to give a high level. But once a species is put on the endangered species list, um, and I'll use the Oregon Spotted Frog as an example, because I know there's a tremendous amount of interest in that. The frog was put on the endangered species list in 2014. Um, likely, it was in decline since 1947 when, um, WikiUp Reservoir was constructed. It's interesting, if you look back actually in the historical record, our colleagues at the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife have notes into the record expressing concern about the impact of fish and wildlife resources with the construction of the reservoir and the dramatic change in the water resources that would follow. Um, but nonetheless, with the spotted frog, um, uh, and any endangered species, once that species, once a species has that protection of the Endangered Species Act, which is a rigorous process to put a species on that, then it has, uh, particular rules that apply. And the rules are essentially that you can't harm a species. You can't, and we use, there's lots of legal definitions. I'm going to try to use more colloquial terms. Happy to go into more technical terms if folks are interested. Um, when, the, the form of, uh, of the legal word is take, but essentially think of it as harming or killing, um, uh, endangered species itself or its habitat. So the spotted frog was put on the endangered species list in 2014. And as a result of that, any activities that were either ongoing or were commencing that had the potential to harm species could be in violation of the Endangered Species Act. Uh, and so that is why we suddenly started talking about the spotted frog and water management, um, more prominently in 2014, because the spotted frog had, had and is continuing to decline at such a rate that it required the protection of the Endangered Species Act. And so we sort of think, again, with our colleagues at OFW, we're sort of the emergency room. Like, when species are in such bad shape, they're, they're coming to our jurisdiction, and we try to get them back to a stable amount and then delist them off, um, the endangered species list. But, but once they're on the list, then certain rules are in effect. You can't harm or take the species. So that's kind of the backdrop to what's occurring here in, um, the Deschutes Basin. Uh, so, uh, as a result of that, because the frog was listed, and we also have bull trout and other species that I could talk about also, but again, I think the frog is the, um, the more familiar example, um, water users that diverted water out of the Deschutes River, um, were identified as the primary cause of impacting the habitat for this listed species. Uh, as Kyle mentioned, 700 to 800,000 acre-feet of water are diverted out of the Deschutes River in the summer. And so those flows out of WikiUp, the flows that were historically, uh, that sustained the wetland habitats and all of the fish and wildlife species in the river, um, have dramatically changed from a somewhat stable, uh, uh, annual flow based on the type of water year to a much more dramatic, um, low flow in the winter, when the reservoir, when the dam is essentially closed to store water for irrigation purposes in the summer, and then very high flows in the summer, um, for irrigation purposes. And so that dramatic change of, uh, of storing the water and releasing it, um, compared to its historic use, really changed the entire, the, the physical channel of the river and all of the species and habitats adjacent to it. So the Endangered Species Act has a lot of different mechanisms for how to deal with things like this. We have one whole approach that we deal with for addressing how federal agencies, um, do projects. Uh, and I'm not going to talk about that tonight, but today I was going to talk about habitat conservation plans, which is a mechanism for non-federal agencies to essentially get a permit to continue their legal use of, uh, in this case, water while addressing their impacts to endangered species. So it's a portion of the Endangered Species Act that allows for what we call an otherwise lawful activity. That may be something like, uh, harvesting timber, or in this case, delivering water, or, uh, building and development, whatever it may be. If that's a legal activity, other than it's endangered species impacts, we try to find a way to work with those, the entity that does that work, um, and bring that into compliance with the Endangered Species Act. so they can continue to do what they're doing, but not cause the impact that they, uh, might be causing. So, um, some, I'm happy to go through all this, but it's essentially a plan developed that addresses, um, their Endangered Species Act liability, which it is a, um, a liability for those, um, entities, um, to give them, um, a certainty going forward that their activities are in compliance with the Endangered Species Act. So, uh, we worked on the Deschutes HCP for a number of years, far too many, but it's, we did get it approved. At the end of 2020, we issued, the Fish and Wildlife Service completed its planning process and issued a 30-year permit to, uh, the Central Oregon Irrigation Districts. And I'll show a map of that in just a moment. It's a 30-year permit, um, and the idea was that we worked with the irrigation districts to essentially modify the storage and release of water at all of the various, um, gauges and reservoirs, um, to minimize the impact to, uh, endangered species while maximizing their ability to deliver water. So, um, the, the species that we, uh, provided the permit for were the Oregon spotted frog and, uh, bull trout. And I'll show maps of those in just a moment. Um, and the permates, those that we issued the permits to are, um, the irrigation districts. And, uh, here's a map of the basin. And these depict, the different colors are all of the different irrigation districts, as you see here. And there's a list of the eight, uh, Central Oregon Irrigation Districts that were, are all parties to the, um, the Deschutes Basin Habitat Conservation Plan, as well as the city of Primeville. So those entities work together to develop a plan that essentially offsets the impacts that they're having, uh, on endangered species. And as, um, uh, as Kyle mentioned, uh, about the diversion of water, um, you know, in the summertime, um, and, uh, I know there were questions about, um, the canal piping and the, um, uh, the impacts to groundwater. Um, from a conservation perspective, and I'm, you know, I represent the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, so I'm going to speak from a conservation perspective. The diversion of so much water that can't make it to the farm is lost to the system. Now, I understand that it recharges the groundwater in those areas under the canals, which are, you know, one would could argue that those are artificial areas that are being charged from, um, the construction of those canals. And to lose forty to sixty percent of the water from the time it leaves the river to the time it gets to the farm, uh, is a tremendous loss of a natural resource. Um, and so the piping and the conservation objectives and the conservation to be gained by not losing all of that water and leaving it in the stream is going to have a tremendous benefit for the fish and wildlife, uh, fish and wildlife resources in the Deschutes Basin. And I just wanted to give you a couple of quick maps. Here's a map of, uh, the spotted frog habitat. Um, and the purple area on the map is the area that is part of the managed water. So this is, the areas below the reservoirs, um, where spotted frogs are found. Essentially, in the Deschutes Basin, spotted frogs are found, uh, in the Deschutes upstream of Bend. So they're in all these other lakes that are not depicted as purple, but those areas are not part of the irrigation system. So we have frogs in the basin that are not impacted by the water management system, but a majority of the area is impacted by the water system. And, um, and that's what's depicted in, uh, purple here. And that's part of the lands covered by the Deschutes HCP. And we get a lot of questions about, is the frog native? Yes, the frog is absolutely native to this area. And where else is the frog found? And, um, happy to go through that also. But for our purposes, in Deschutes, um, the Whitewater Park is essentially the northernmost, um, is the end of the range of the spotted frog, um, in the Deschutes. We have it also up in the Mount Hood area and then, um, in the Klamath Basin and then in other parts of, in Washington State. But for our area, um, the northernmost reaches in the, um, at the Whitewater Park. Uh, I thought I'd just throw this in. This seems to be one of the most hotly discussed portions of the Habitat Conservation Plan. There are, um, requirements and metrics like this for all across the basin, whether it's Whitechewes Creek or, um, the Crooked River or Ochico Creek or Crescent Creek, et cetera. There's all of these, there are measurements and timing, um, requirements, um, for this massive plan. Uh, but this area, this particular area, the release from WikiUp, is the area that gets the most interest. So I thought I would just highlight it. Um, and these are the, we referenced the hundred cubic feet per second minimum, um, flow that is for the first seven years of the plan. It ramps up at, um, to three hundred CFS in the winter, um, and then finally up to the four to five hundred CFS between, from years thirteen to the end of the plan. And that gets us back to a more normal, trying to get back to mimicking the natural hydro, uh, hydrology. Uh, not exactly the same, but our ideas to try to provide that habitat because the, um, spotted frog is an entirely aquatic animal. It requires water for its entire portion of its life cycle. And it, um, when we store the water in the winter and we essentially bring the river down to such low volumes, the frogs are stranded outside of the water and are desiccated and can't survive. So the goal is to provide overwintering habitat for the frog, um, as we move forward. And we timed this with, um, in conjunction with the, uh, irrigation districts. So habitat conservation plans are negotiated agreements. So that we didn't, um, tell the districts that this was what they had to do. We certainly let them know what we, we knew the frog needed and negotiated from there. But they designed this with our technical assistance to, um, restore these flows based on their ability to conserve water through large-scale piping, market, uh, market changes, on-farm efficiencies, using their whole suite of tools. But I will say that the largest bang for the buck for restoring flows in the river is, uh, the large-scale piping that is currently underway. Um, just going to give a quick shout out to our bull trout. Bull trout are also in the basin. Um, the map depicts their historic range. Um, currently, they are not above, um, sorry if that's not really clear, but they're not above, uh, Big Falls right now. And that's just upstream of, uh, where Whitechewes Creek, um, uh, comes into, um, the Deschutes River. So bull trout are in the Crooked River Basin and they're in, um, Lake Billy Schnook, um, and the Metolius. And the Metolius is, um, just an absolutely wonderfully productive, ice-cold bull trout, um, spawning area. So we're very fortunate that bull trout have very good habitat in this area. Um, uh, much better than many other areas, frankly. Um, and so, uh, we were able to work with the irrigation districts to address, um, their impacts to, uh, bull trout, which was much less significant, much less significant than, um, the spotted frog. So, um, with that, I have a website on here, which I know is way too long to write down and I apologize for that, but I'm happy to give you my slides. Uh, but this website has, um, all of the documents of the HCP. We've created, um, a, a story map where you can go and kind of learn and fly through the basin and see it. There's on, there's, um, real-time tools where you could look at, wow, what's required? Oh, and where is that gauge? And so there's some really, really great education and information tools on this website. And I will, um, make sure the county staff has my presentation so they can share that website, um, with you. And with that, I knew that, um, I would expect that you might have questions, so I thought I might just, uh, leave it there.
All right.
Have I stopped sharing? There we go.
Awesome. Yeah, let's get started with some questions with Commissioner Swisher.
Hi. Um, are there other species on the endangered list that are in the same area of this Deschutes watershed that will benefit from the spotted frog plan because of the water flows?
As far as endangered species, there are, um, uh, there are no other endangered species above Bend. Now, all of the native fish and wildlife in the, in the basin will, will absolutely benefit. So our native red-banded trout, mountain whitefish, and all of our fish and wildlife, um, resources will absolutely benefit. Further downstream, uh, there are some other listed fish, steelhead, um, and some of the other salmon species are also impacted. And our colleagues at the National Marine Fisheries are similarly performing this task. It's a little confusing to some folks, but the Endangered Species Act is actually implemented by two federal agencies. Fish and Wildlife Service manages all of the terrestrial, so all the species that live on the land and those that live in freshwater. And National Marine Fisheries Service or NIMPs or NOAA, the weather people, they manage the species that are out in the ocean or spend more than half their time in the ocean. Not exactly sure what endangered species is set up that way. It confuses people all the time, but, um, but those other species are also, um, getting the protection of this plan.
One follow-up to that, what about birds, uh, that dependent on water to, uh, fish? Eagles, osprey, et cetera? Uh, are any of those on the endangered list in this portion or are sensitive species?
Uh, bald and golden eagles are protected by the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act, but neither have the, um, protection of the Endangered Species Act, um, right now. And that's, um, that's a good thing because that means they aren't at that kind of level of, of decline. And I think folks know the story of the bald eagle. We were able to take that off the endangered species list. Um, but, uh, but as far as like the, the, um, the ecosystem-wide effects, they are going to be phenomenal for the entire, um, watershed and the, all of the biota, um, to be honest, because the osprey eat the fish and the, like, every year, if you know, you know, you hear about that, um, as irrigation season winds down, um, the, 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 the historical practice, um, was to reduce the flow out of WikiUp reservoir to save the water for next year, which is a logical thing to do. Um, however, there's a fish kill every year as a result of that because, um, the fish, uh, you know, their, their habitat gets de-watered. So the, by not having these really varied swings in the, the level of the river, we're going to have, our whole aquatic ecosystem is going to sort of come back to life in a way that's going to allow for the birds and wildlife and everything to benefit. So while there isn't a direct endangered species benefit for other species, because we would have put them in the plan. We would, if they were, we would have had them in the plan as well. Uh, but it does have a broader ecological benefit for the other species as well.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions specifically for Bridget Moran? Uh, Commissioner Williams?
So, I'm thinking because, uh, living in the South County, I know in years past, maybe five, 10 years ago, the, uh, community has gathered fish, uh, in our area trying to move them to, uh, deeper waters. Has this spotted frog, uh, program helped, uh, this part?
It hasn't yet, but it will as those flows continue to increase because we likely will not be seeing those fish kills every year when we get to a more stable flow as we go forward.
Um, I'll ask you a question. So last summer when we had our heat dome, I, I'm a regular river recreator. Um, and I noticed that the water temperature got quite warm in the Deschutes, quite a bit warmer than previous years. So I was just wondering, I, I know that a lot of that temperature change can be... Well, I guess I'll just ask, how, how did that affect the frogs and, and the bull trout?
Uh, generally, uh, last year was, was a very dry year and a very warm year. Um, so we, we're still in the process of compiling all the data. We're, um, to evaluate sort of long-term trends as far as, um, the impacts to frog. Um, so I don't have all of that at hand immediately yet because we're, go through. We and our colleagues at USGS, who do a lot of that work for us, have a, a very rigorous QAQC program. Um, however, we did see that the, um, the frogs, mostly due to the, the water volume, less so than to temperature. Um, the Deschutes is generally still a pretty cold system. And so we didn't, the effects we would see are more about de-watering the habitat as opposed to a temperature impact to them.
That makes sense. Thank you. Okay, I have, um, a general question from a member of the public who sent in a question, uh, earlier. Um, and so I think I will read the question, um, and see if any of the panelists have a comment, um, or an answer to the question. Um, so the question is, what happens with groundwater withdrawal with supplemental irrigation water rights? With water transfers, with watering golf courses, and with water conservation, if any, when drought is declared by the governor? And then a second follow-up to that is what steps should be taken to bring awareness to drought? Would anyone like to comment on this question?
Well, it kind of sounds like an OWRD question to me. Um, so when a county is declared in drought status, what that does, it invokes or, um, enacts some administrative rules that are specific to water rights and, and things that you can do with water rights that you don't normally get to do. And traditionally, I guess, uh, one of the most common things that a, a person would do is, let's say that they have a irrigation system and the stream there, uh, they divert from their source is really deficient or they have no water. What they can do in a drought-declared status is they can apply for a drought emergency groundwater permit and use groundwater to supplement their use, uh, during the droughts. And that, that emergency use of water is only good for the duration of the drought declaration. So in other words, the, the permit that was issued expires at the end of the year or if the governor rescinds the drought earlier. So that, that is a temporary use of water. There's other parts of the administrative rules that allow folks to move water around much more easily, much quicker. So it's, uh, it's really designed to give folks who have, uh, because of the drought, um, access to water. That's really what it's for. Um, it doesn't really affect existing water rights, doesn't change things from that standpoint.
Okay, um, and then the second part of, well, I'm sorry. I should first ask if anyone else, any or other panels would like to respond to the question? Okay, so, um, there's also a question here about, um, recommended steps for Deschutes County. Um, so a, a, a general question from, from me personally, not the concerned citizen, um, is, is there a call to action from any of you three with your presentations? These were very informative, but I'm wondering if you have any suggestions or things that we as citizens should be thinking about as we go into our comprehensive plan update, um, strategies or, or things like that?
Uh, from a, you know, the immediate need, of course, is the North Unit Irrigation Districts. So the, the irrigation districts are working together to, um, and really, you know, North Unit, they are in crisis, uh, situation. The districts are working together to try to, um, garner some voluntary efforts where taking water from a, one irrigation district and sending it to the other irrigation district, North Unit, um, is a way of, uh, bolstering their supply. You know, it's a pretty small scale, but, um, if there are any barriers to that, being able to do that, that would be something that would be beneficial in these severe drought times. The other, the message, of course, all the time, not in droughts, is conserve water and be the most efficient you can.
Yeah, maybe I'll add on to that, um, that I know that, um, there are many folks who have questions about the irrigation canal piping and are concerned about impacts to their particular well. Um, and I, uh, I, I, I respect that. I know that's a legitimate, real impact. I will also pro, argue on the other side of that discussion that, um, the, the water conservation opportunity that that represents is significant. And so so much water has been taken out of the Deschutes River since the construction of the reservoir and the, um, and these basalt-lined canals that really create artificial recharge of groundwater resource in an area where if it remained in the river or, uh, prior to, without being diverted, it would, um, it would have its natural interaction with the groundwater. And I don't want to get too And I don't want to get too far out of my league. That's definitely more of a USGS and Water Resources scientific element, but I think folks, I have friends that live adjacent to canals and they ask me these questions all the time about, but you know, the wildlife, they come to these, you know, these open canals and it's going to harm the wildlife and, or you know, or their well is impacted. And generally, those are artificially created situations. And going back to try to only divert the water that the irrigation districts need and leaving the rest in our natural system allows for our best ability to have long-term sort of resilience of our natural water system in the river as opposed to in the canal. So I would say supporting those projects really enhances the long-term resiliency of our water resources.
Let's see, other questions, comments, things that maybe we should be asking to further be informed for our comprehensive plan update process and also future projects? Vice Chair Altman?
My question is for Bridget based on her last comment. So, you know, talking about people who live in alfalfa or tumalo who may have lost or see a decrease in their well production, just in terms of conservation, if such a thing were possible, would it be better for the river if communities like that had a large, shared well in their own little potable water district that they use for their households versus everybody having little wells? It sort of goes back to that question that I think Chair Kiras asked before, is it better to have, you know, like a municipal well versus everybody else having wells? But if we're talking about people who are worried about the, losing the recharge for their personal wells, if they're, you know, we're a community one, would that be better for conservation, do you think? Because then they, people might be less worried about recharge loss from the ditches?
I would really probably defer to the USGS on that, just to be honest, because I, and you know, I was listening intently when you asked that question earlier about the distributed versus, you know, more densely, you know, packed well. So I don't really think that's my area of expertise. I would say like it's kind of the same as far as the volume removed is the volume, you know, whether it's all in one place or separate from a conservation standpoint. So I don't know if others want to take a stab at that, but I don't think that's quite my area of expertise. I'd like to stay in my lane as I would.
Would anyone else like to respond to that?
This is Steve. I can, I'm not sure I can answer it any better, but I can, I mean, I would still stand by saying like, you know, that a more distributed way of getting out groundwater is preferred. But I guess I can't really speak to like the economics or the economy of scale of combining, you know, if, if, you know, a community needs, uses just one well, perhaps they could, you know, they'd have the money to drill it deeper and, you know, do certain things that an individual homeowner wouldn't be able to do. So there's some economics there, which I can't really speak to, that you would have to weigh against, you know, the idea of having individual homeowner wells. You know, all things being equal, you know, I would still say the distributed system or distributed pumping is better than one site, but, you know, economics-wise, you could probably find a balance that would, you know, kind of split the difference kind of thing. So, but I can't specifically, you know, tell you where that balance would be.
Let's see, I don't see any further questions. And I'm just going to wait just one minute in case. All right. So then I will just say thank you very much to all three panelists. We really appreciate your time. I know I can speak for everyone and say that those are very clear presentations and very well organized, very educational. So we just really appreciate it. And with that, we will go ahead and move on to our next item, which is going to be our discussion about the dark skies outdoor lighting update and our next steps with that. So.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So based on our last week's discussion and also in the memo in the packet that we had this week, it seems like we are, we have several options that we could consider. And last week, or two weeks ago, we discussed having another panel. But my understanding of the packet and memo is that actually, in terms of staff resources and potentially organizing another panel, our group of stakeholders are moving further with the project, we really need to ask the board how they would like to proceed. And so now we have some options for that. So what I'm going to do is go ahead and summarize what I heard the options to be and then see if I'm leaving anything out. But then after that, if anyone has any other preliminary remarks they want to share, that's fine, but before we get into debating exactly what to recommend, we really should get a motion on the floor so that we know exactly what we're debating. So here are what I see as the options. We could recommend to the board that we do nothing. We could just say, hey, we think this is great the way it is, we don't need to take any further action. We could recommend that we organize a group of stakeholders to discuss the various different perspectives on the possibility of updating the ordinance, maybe get some other types of groups out there, maybe some people that have differing perspectives. We could recommend updating the ordinance and just say, we think this thing could benefit from an update. Possibly even give some examples like reflecting changes in technology with LEDs. Or we could recommend developing an educational outreach campaign or recommend requiring a lighting review plan for new applications. That's another idea that came up. And finally, of course, we could recommend trying to figure out some better enforcement strategies. So there's the summary. Am I leaving anything out in terms of options?
And Madam Chair, this is Tarek Rawlings for the record, associate planner. Yeah, that's largely what's reflected in the memo and any combination of those would be an appropriate motion to convey to the board. Essentially, at this point, I think you captured it well, that we're trying to gather what I think my colleagues and I understood to be a pretty overwhelming amount of support from both the panelists and the commission to convey that support to the board at this time, whether that's general, as you kind of had mentioned, or any of the options in between, whether you wanted to recommend a specific secondary panel or anything like that. But you're exactly right, the next steps would be that we would convey the support, if that was what the commission would ideally like staff to do, to the Board of County Commissioners at a future date, essentially to gauge their willingness to allot staff resources and potentially budgetary resources to that, what the commission would recommend exactly.
Thank you. Okay. So at this time, I would entertain a motion, if there is one, or any other preliminary non-debaty type of remarks, if anyone wants. Oh, yes, Commissioner Swisher.
Hit myself unmuted. This is a preliminary remark, not a motion, but it seems to me there's a very baseline piece of updating the code based on recent technology. There were some charts and stuff about incandescent lights and wattages and all of that. In today's world, since that was implemented in 94, there's a whole bunch of changes about LED lighting and the color and intensity and those kinds of things. And just being able to update to bring some of the more technical aspects certainly seems to be an area of consideration. And my last preliminary comment is that perhaps before the county commissioners need to think about, do they need more input from Central Oregon builders or other people with disparate points of view that might need to come together just as interest groups or something to provide, make sure that they hear all the points of view before they decide whether to give more staff input and that kind of thing. So those are my preliminary thoughts and eventually probably would make a motion to at least go with a basal recommendation, let's just get some of the technical stuff about LED lights and this thing, and have that as part of the information packets out here available to the public.
Okay. Commissioner Williams, preliminary, non-debaty type remarks?
Yes, absolutely preliminary. The email from Tarek, from the IDA on some of their ideas, I liked the community education, keeping things like at the planning desk. They also had some good ideas on code update. And I in no way, shape, even consider, you know, retroactive. We're not looking at any of that, in my opinion. You know, we know it's against the law, we know it's that. So that, to me, is a non, is a non thing. I think we should have more conversation. I know it doesn't have to be immediately, but again, I think community education, looking at updating the code, get people wanting to do it, not having to do it, is important.
Excellent. Commissioner, Vice Chair Altman?
My question is more for Peter, I think. If we were to say that we were interested in updating the ordinance and sending that to the Board of County Commissioners, wouldn't there be a public hearing process where some of what we're discussing would come together, like there would be a public hearing and people would be able to come and have testimony and things like that? Am I correct in my assumption?
Commissioner Altman, thank you for the opportunity to respond. Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. I think, you know, if, there's kind of two possibilities with your concept. One is you could recommend to the board the importance of amending the code, which would, you know, with the board's input, you know, if they so chose, we, staff would then likely, you know, work internally, work with, in other processes for input, but ultimately staff would have to draft the amendments. And then that would initiate a legislative amendment process that would start the hearings and the Planning Commission would hold the first evidentiary hearing. I think if you, if you made the recommendation to the board of the importance of the amendments, staff would stay at a 30,000-foot level to engage the board about resources, other demands, some of the elements that were discussed two weeks ago, things of that sort, so that the Board of County Commissioners could make an informed decision about when, if, and how we would undertake such an effort. So there's a lot that would go, I think the short version is there's a lot that needs to take place by staff with input from the Planning Commission, of course, that would ultimately inform a set of amendments that would then be available for public testimony. Did that answer your question? Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Are there other preliminary remarks or would some, anyone like to make any motion about which, if any, of these options to recommend? And I agree, it could be, let's go ahead with Commissioner Crawford. Oh, you're muted.
I think you presented five options here, and I think there's two that are important. And so I'll make a motion. So I move that we recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that we update the ordinances and we develop a educational outreach plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Susan.
Okay. So it has been moved and seconded that we recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that we update the ordinance and we develop an educational outreach campaign. Did I say that right?
That's pretty darn close, yes.
Close enough?
Yep. Good for me.
Okay. Let's have some discussion and debate on this motion. Commissioner Swisher?
I support the motion in this way that I think it's really important to let the county commissioners know, we as a planning commission believe this is an important topic, and kind of put it into their hands, the aspects of the, of the technical stuff that needs to be upgraded, that's pretty obvious. But secondly, the importance of that educational outreach and perhaps a more robust opportunity for that. I think the county commission could then look at our recommendation, think about their resources and what staff resources might be and how that might affect other constituents and through the hearing process, that would allow other constituents to come to the table. And so at that particular moment, I'm just giving my support for the motion and my reason why.
Commissioner Crawford, I should have actually asked you as the maker of the motion if you wanted to start with any remarks. So let's go to you, and you're still muted. And then we'll go to Commissioner Williams. If you could unmute.
There we go. Thank Commissioner Swisher for those comments that are right on. I have visited with some people about this light situation, and I think there's just a tremendous amount of education that could be done and to solve a tremendous amount of our problem. You know, it might be a booth at the county fair, or it might be a flyer in electrical billings or whatever. But I think we need to do something there. I have talked to neighbors and I've had excellent results in getting them to change their lights, et cetera, et cetera. And back to our current policies developed, you know, roughly 30 years ago, it's, things have changed. We need to get that updated. So I think let's ship this on to the board and let them chew it a little bit, and if they'd like to send it back to us for some refinement and concept development, I am all in favor of that. So I would urge everyone to vote yes on this motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Crawford. Commissioner Williams, can we hear from you next?
Yes, I am in support of this motion as well. The one thing I would say, kind of based on the information we got from the IDA, is we do not need to potentially include the permit inspection. I know our resources are thin with the county planning department, and if we keep it more on a code update versus adding it to permit inspections, as we've heard the inspectors when they're out there, it's electrical, it's plumbing, things like that. It doesn't have to do with necessarily a light fixture cover. So, but I am, I'm in agreement and I'm up for it.
Commissioner Swisher?
Just a quick comment. I would kind of like to leave it in the commissioner's hands to decide from the input they get if they want to do any updated code enforcement or those kinds of things, or code changes regarding that inspection piece. They're the ones dealing with the resources and stuff, so I wouldn't want to tie their hands either way by.
We're wrapping it up.
By recommending that they do that or not do that either way. I would like to just leave that open for them to debate.
So are you saying that you would oppose the motion because you want to include more, more information about these other options?
No.
No, no, not at all. I think the motion as it is, is just right.
Oh, alright.
I don't want to, I don't want to attach more to it than what we've already said.
Ah, I see, yes, that makes sense to me, okay. Let's see here, so I will say that I agree with what each other Commissioner has said. I do think that it would be nice for the Board to know that we're very interested to hear from other members of the community, through, you know, other, other stakeholders. But I envision that being part of the process. If we were, if we were to hear from them that they're interested in us exploring some specifics about how that ordinance could be updated, and exploring developing an educational outreach campaign, and they're agreeable to that, then I imagine that we would be convening a group of stakeholders as a part of that process. And I imagine that maybe they would, they would also know that, or if they had that question, staff would be able to communicate that we're, that that's, that's something that we would be interested in doing or helping with. That we are in no way proposing, like, okay, we've heard from everyone, let's just go right ahead and update this thing, that's, that's, I think that's clear, that that's not what we're hoping to do, but let me check in with staff and make sure that that could be communicated to the Board in some way along with our recommendation.
Certainly, thank you very much, Madam Chair, it's Tarek Rawlings again. I think that that, and also kind of related to Vice Chair Altman's comment from earlier, there's, there's an opportunity potentially outside of even a legislative amendment process of public hearings within the forthcoming county's comprehensive plan update process, where there, there's often a lot of public open houses and opportunities like that to weigh in on resource factors, other things like that, which could include dark skies information and best practices. So that's just one other option for how some of this public input could be captured, both from general public as well as from these sort of diverse stakeholder groups that you've been mentioning. That's, I'm taking notes on everything so far, and that's certainly something I can make sure that all those details are captured once I convey this support to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. One other question for you then, Tarek. Would, I, I think, something I, something I've been thinking about is that, I, I agree with Commissioner Crawford, that these are the two standout items. They are for me as well. It might be nice for the Board to know that there are these other options out there, but we selected, if we do end up voting for this motion, that we selected these two. Is it possible to just share with them that part of our process was, we considered these options and these are the two standout ones, but if the Board had a different idea about, like, let's say they look at it, they're like, oh gosh, we're super into enforcement, let's do enforcement instead. Is that a possibility of something that could be communicated?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, just to kind of recap, just from my understanding, it's looking like the, kind of the four main aspects we would be mentioning in terms of the commission support to the Board of County Commissioners would involve an update to the ordinance to reflect technological best practices amongst others, as well as an educational campaign. The third item would be feedback from a diverse stakeholder group, and then potentially the fourth would be some type of enforcement-related discussion, maybe auxiliary discussion like that. But of course, I think the main approach to briefing the County Commissioners would involve background, explaining the Planning Commission's process, as well as the panel, and then additionally incorporating a lot of the presentation materials and information we've, we've received from the panelists and from the members of the public, that's all going to essentially be summarized and inform that update to the Board of County Commissioners, even though we're giving this targeted conveyance of support from the Planning Commission regarding kind of those four main preferred options, but certainly amongst, amidst all the other options that we just mentioned, too.
So to be clear, I think the motion that's on the floor right now is just that we would, we would recommend updating the ordinance and developing an educational outreach campaign.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
So that's, that's the current motion that's on the floor, and we'll be voting on that shortly. And my question is, if that motion passes, is it also possible, and it sounds like it is, to communicate that, that there are other options that the Board could consider, it's just we're recommending these two?
Yes, that is possible, exactly. Thank you for clarifying, those two items are the focus of the, the commission support.
Well, we don't know yet, we-
Exactly, of the mo, the current-
I'd be like to call out a support for this motion.
Sure, sure.
And, and then again, just one other option that we did consider for the record is recommending, requiring a lighting review plan as part of the process for new applications. And that's not something that's in our motion right now, but it is something that we considered and, and chose these two among them.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you for clarifying, I appreciate it.
Okay. So, let's see, is there further debate or questions for staff? Nope, no further debate, okay. So I think we will go ahead and vote on the motion. So, oops, I lost my screen, bear with me for a second here. Okay, so the motion we are voting on is, again, that we recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that we update the ordinance and that we develop an educational outreach campaign. So we're really clear on what we're voting for, voting on, rather. Okay, let's go down with Commissioner Crawford first, how do you vote? Okay, Commissioner Altman?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
And me, I will also vote yes, the Chair votes yes, so it is unanimous that five Commissioners have voted in favor of updating the ordinance, or recommending to the Board of County Commissioners that we update the ordinance and developing an educational outreach campaign.
Very good, thank you so much, Chair Kears, if there's nothing else for staff, I think that's all I had for you.
Excellent, okay, so we will move to the next item. This is going to be the update on the Tumalo Community Plan. So I will turn it over to Peter Russell, Senior Transportation Planner.
Good evening Commissioners, a short PowerPoint presentation for you, Peter Russell, Senior Transportation Planner. We've got a lot of planning going on in the county upcoming, so this is kind of how to separate the various balls, we'll be juggling in the air. Okay, so first off, I'm going to talk several planning efforts that are going to affect Tumalo. This graphic here, the big blue circle, I'm trying to show the interrelationships, the big blue circle is the Shutes County Comprehensive Plan, the one to its left, the kind of the salmon is the Transportation System Plan, the one to the right is the Tumalo Community Plan, and then the kind of orangey colored one at the bottom is the Tumalo Community Plan, but just the bike, ped and transit component, or what's sometimes called active transportation. So we're, all these are either underway now or getting ready to go underway, so we have multiple efforts that will deal with Tumalo issues, they're going to overlap some in time, and what we're doing is, some of it is with consultants, some of it is staff only, but we're all working in the four member or so long-range planning unit together to make sure there's enough coordination so that we all know what we're doing and we get a unified product out of the four. So the Comprehensive Plan, otherwise known as the Shutes 2040, I'm not going to talk a whole lot about it, but it's the highest order plan among the four cited, this is a state-mandated comprehensive plan, this looks at the 30,000-foot for your county in terms of it has an urban growth management component, has a rural growth management component, has resource management, the Transportation System Plan is essentially part of it, we look at population growth, changes in the county, this is, you know, the, probably the biggest and most important plan that we have in the Shutes County. We're currently reviewing consultant proposals for this. If you have more questions on consultant proposals, both Will and Peter Gatawski are here, can answer those. Probably going to take 18 to 24 months to complete this, so we haven't started yet, we've just reviewing, like I said, several consultants have proposed on it, and we're in the, the interview state of the affairs at the moment. So any questions on the comp plan before I go on? Okay, hearing none. So the Transportation System Plan, which you were briefed on at your last meeting, this is funded by our Road Department, they're also leading it, although I have a role to play in it as well. The firm we hired is Kittleson and Associates, it's approximately 40% done, they've reviewed the existing conditions, they've identified areas where the county intersections and roadways may need improvements, they've looked at safety issues, they're developing a project list with Road Department input on high priority projects, medium priority, low priority projects, both road, intersection, bridges, bicycle ped aspects, as well as safety. There, we haven't scheduled it yet, but there's going to be an online open house or two coming up, so we'll get the public's input on that, it's very important to get public input. Once we get that, they'll go to another edition of the TSP, and then ultimately it will come before the Planning Commission for formal adoption. So any questions on the TSP? So, now we're down to the Tumalo Community Plan, Tumalo is an unincorporated community.
Peter, I didn't get my hand up in ti, or unmuted in time, I apologize, Jason, I apologize to the Chair, but I do have a question on the transportation plan.
Okay.
If that's okay. In the Transportation System Plan versus the Tumalo Community Plan Bike Ped Transit Section, also off to the side in the agenda, it talks about the Sisters Trails Community Plan also, how does that fit between the Tumalo Community Plan Bike Ped Transit versus the Transportation Plan in particular?
This is one of those, who's going to get done first, but we can amend the TSP, or if the Tumalo Community Plan gets done first, we can amend the Bike Ped section of our TSP. It's kind of, we didn't, we were in 2010 and doing all these simultaneously, that's pretty much the approach we took, and the Sisters is a later slide, so, but essentially your TSP has your major goals and policies for transportation, and then we can incorporate what we come with, come up with for the Tumalo Community Plan and Sisters Rural Trails into the Bike Ped section of the Transportation System Plan. And then as, as also said, the TSP will have a list of projects that include Bike Ped projects. Hopefully that answers your question.
It does, and it's just, if I heard you correctly, it's kind of a function of timing, whichever one gets done first would be the appropriate place for it to happen regarding those updates.
Right. So, yeah, we can always amend these plans, they're living documents, so let's say we get the TSP buttoned up before we have all the Tumalo Community Plan aspects done, we can always amend the TSP to add if there's new policy language or, or something from the Tumalo Community Plan or from the Sisters Trail into the overriding TSP. So it's, it's kind of a non-issue, it's, we had hoped to get the Tumalo Community Plan and the Sisters Rural Trails done earlier, but it took a while to get it through the grant approval process, so that's why the original intent was to have it done first and then just simply slide that into the TSP for the Bike Ped section, but didn't work out that way.
Thank you, Peter, and this is a question that might be appropriate later for Peter Gatawski, but the Tumalo Community Plan, when we did the Sisters Country Plan, the idea was that there would be some lessons learned in that particular process, or processes that might help other rural communities in the county develop their community plan. And again, I'm just wondering if there's any of those lessons being applied to this Tumalo Community Plan, but again, that might be a more appropriate question for later down the road here than right now.
Okay. Okay, so let me get to the Tumalo Community Plan, again, it's going to be a 2020 to 2040 plan, it's an element of the Transportation System Plan, and the comp plan as well, both, so it's one of these where it sort of straddles a couple of plans. Technically, our Tumalo Community Plan, like our Terabon Community Plan and our Newburgh Country Plan, they are appendices to the Comprehensive Plan, and the transportation element of those community plans informs the Transportation System Plan. So the Tumalo Community Plan, the overall plan, is going to be done internally by staff alone. One of the reasons we're doing the Tumalo Community Plan now is because of the major changes that have occurred in Tumalo, both in population growth, some of the land use activities that have gone on there, the development of a small-scale sewer system south of US-20, there's just been a lot of changes in Tumalo for those of us who've been around for a while, so we're looking at, at that, and we're looking at, you know, irrigation, land use, zoning, everything except Bike Ped and Transit, that's going to be in the, the TGM grant I'll talk about in a minute. We're going to do some online open houses, and what we're also doing right now is working with Kittleson and Associates on getting our planning lined out in our meetings, so we're not tripping over each other's feet in Will's glorious phrase, so we're trying to be good dance partners. So any questions about the Tumalo Community Plan that's coming up?
Thank you, Peter, that's helpful.
Okay, rolling on. So we got a grant from the Oregon Department of Transportation, Department of Land Conservation and Development for a part of the Tumalo Community Plan. We had, received a $75,000 grant, of which $50,000 goes to Tumalo Community Plan. Again, we hired Kittleson and Associates, the firm is also doing our TSP, so there's, you know, some obviously, some good coordination there, because you're working with the same firm, it's focusing on Bike Ped and Transit. We are currently working, Tarek's been working really hard on finalizing the time schedule for this, and so we've been in contact with the project manager for Kittleson for their portion of the work on this, along with our work on the larger Tumalo Community Plan, so we can have efficiencies wherever possible, you know, shared open houses, how we're going to do our online. We're going to be a little bit, you know, one or two steps off because we can't get everything simultaneous, but we're trying to make it as comprehensive and consistent as possible, so we don't, you know, have the public go into meeting fatigue. So any questions on the grant for the Tumalo Community Plan portion? Okay, hearing none. So the other thing we have going on in Tumalo, like I said, there's a lot for a community of ballpark 600 people, the Road Department has been tasked with a sewer feasibility study, they're in the early stages of putting that together, that would be one of the key issues that would inform the larger Tumalo Community Plan. Obviously, for those of you who have been here, when Sisters had septic, it was one kind of community, when Sisters received sewer, it became a different community. One of the development bottlenecks in Tumalo has been the combination of small lot sizes and septic systems, so the community had asked the county to look at a sewer feasibility study, much as the Road Department and the county did for the unincorporated community of Terabon. So like I said, the Road Department is just starting up with that, their project manager and I have exchanged phone calls and emails to kind of make sure we're all on the, on the same page, because the larger Tumalo Community Plan, that's going to be a key component. The other thing we have going on is there's a land use application to extend the current sewer system from the, we'll call it the south side of US-20 to the north side, so that went to a hearings officer earlier this week, it's in the seven, seven and seven period, meaning it's seven days for general comment, it's seven days to respond to what was in the first seven days, and then the applicant has the last seven days. So what determines that hearings officer decision, that that could also have some influence or consequences for the Tumalo Community Plan, we're trying to figure out the sewer. So you've got those two activities going on, so any other questions on that? So this is the, TGM grant had two parts, so we also had one for Sisters Country. I know you guys are really enjoying this graphic I put together, I'm getting my money's worth out of it, trying to show how these interact, we were, we had a lot of internal staff discussions, how can we display this? So for that $75,000 grant, $25,000 goes to Rural Trails and Sisters Country, and where we're getting from that is the county, the Forest Service, and the City of Sisters, along with a lot of stakeholders, such as Sisters Trail Alliance, other members in the community, came up with the Sisters Country Vision Action Plan, and the livability component had developed a Rural Trail system, you know, leading to Sisters and around Sisters, so we're going to expend some time on that. A lot of the work has already been done by the Forest Service, so we're not having as many meetings on the Sisters Rural Trails as we are on the Tumalo Community Plan. Again, the ultimate will be, maps could be amended in our TSP in the Bike Ped section at the 30,000-foot level showing generally where trails might go or connectors, also we'll have to have text that, since so much of it's on federal lands, and the county has no jurisdiction there, we can just say, well, it's here, but further environmental work will have to occur. So I've been contacting my peers over on the Forest Service side about this. So, I've been contacting my peers over on the Forest Service side about this. Both of the Tumalo Community Plan TGM Grant and the Sisters Rural Trails TGM Grant will have stakeholder committees, so I've reached out, we're working with our own county Bike Ped Advisory Committee, they have members on there, Cascades East Transit. We're also having folks from the adaptive sports community for the Sisters one, as well as Sisters Trail Alliance, and outreach to an equestrian group. And again, we're working with Karen Swersky because they have the grant through this to finalize the schedule, to make sure we're, you know, in lockstep with the Tumalo Community Plan and not tripping over one another. So, this is where we come to the planning commission for next steps, and that is, as I said, we have a stakeholders advisory committee for the Bike Ped Transit component of the Tumalo Community Plan with this TGM grant, which is also known as Active Transportation and the Rural Trails and Sisters Country. And so, what we'd like to have is a planning commissioner for each one of these advisory committees, for the Tumalo Community Plan Bike Ped Transit Component and the Rural Trails and Sisters. You don't have to decide tonight, it's just something to kind of put a bug in your ear for, and you can decide at the next PC meeting, and of course, the question, because we know volunteers, you have a lot on your plate. So, we have four advised stakeholder committee meetings for the Tumalo Community Plan Bike Ped Transit Component, two for the Rural Trails, they'll be online, and I imagine they'll be like one, one to two hours. The end goal is, once we have these two community, well, it'll all come, it'll all come to you. You'll look at the TSP through a series of public hearings, you'll see the comp plan at a series of public hearings. Same thing with the Tumalo Community Plan and then the TGM Plan, which will also go as part of the TSP. So, you'll see it in your official capacity, but we thought it would be helpful to have a stakeholder committee member with planning commissioners included, so that way you'd be more familiar with the project, and the first time we appear at a public hearing won't be the first time you see it. We're also scheduling some work sessions, or we'll have work sessions in our schedule at major events in both the Tumalo Community Plan and this TGM process as well, to brief you, where you want to make a decision, we'll just kind of be looking for some feedback, much as we had you work as a public advisory committee for the TSP update. So, with that.
I have a question.
Sure.
Peter, so for commissioners who might want to be involved with either of the two processes, what is the timeline for those four meetings or two meetings? Like, is it over the next year? I believe maybe you maybe had said that earlier, or is it a shorter timeframe than that?
That's a great question. I'm anticipating the TGM grant, it's going to be somewhere 12 to 18 months, is what I would think. And so, you know, four meetings sprinkled over, over that time for the Tumalo and two for Sisters. That's part of, I don't have a final schedule for you, but that's kind of what we're, what we're looking at, 12 to 18 months. If we can get it faster, we'll go faster.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so like I said, I don't need an answer right this second, it's more just to, you know, for those who are interested, who might, you know, want to be in it, you can work with Chair Kieris, and if I can, we can find out at your next meeting.
Peter and Chair Kieris, just a comment from me, that Sisters Rural Trails and that TGM grant certainly is of interest to me, but I might time out on the commission before that work is done. So, ultimately, if there's someone else on the commission that's for sure going to be there, would probably be a better choice, but I'd also participate at least as an observer while I'm on the commission for that also.
Would anyone, does, does anyone else want to express any interest on either of these two projects at this time? You're of course welcome to contact me after the meeting or later on this week, but I am kind of interested to see who, who might be jumping at this opportunity. A thought just to share for Peter in terms of involvement, we are running up against some timing-out issues. I do believe if the timeframe is 12 to 18 months, Commissioner Crawford, your term is over in one year from when?
Twenty-three.
From what?
My, I am done in 23, June of 23.
June, okay, yeah, so that's not quite 18 months.
Right.
And then I think Commissioner Kirby is done in a similar timeframe?
Correct, that's true.
Yeah, so, we will be getting at least one new person pretty soon, and then we also have me, Vice Chair Altman, and Commissioner Williams, who are not timing out anytime So, that's something I think for us to think about. I'll, I'll leave it to us to ponder over the next little bit here, but let's, let's think about it.
Okay, we can try and make it a wonderful going-away present. Always helpful. Any other questions I can answer for the planning commission?
I think, I think your presentation was so thorough that it covered all of the necessary information.
Okay, well, thank you much, and have a, have a good evening.
You too, thanks very much. All right, so now we turn to planning commission and staff comments. I'll call on Peter first. Peter Gatauski, do you have any staff comments?
Yes, I do, thank you, Madam, Madam Chair and planning commissioners. A couple of remarks, I know that we're heading into close to the eight o'clock hour. Just, it's just a reminder, really for anybody who's, might be listening online, the at-large position for the planning commission vacancy, Chair Kieris and I are participating in interviews on Tuesday from eight to 11. I mentioned this at the last meeting, we're going to be interviewing six candidates. Commissioners Adair and Chang will be joining us, and ultimately, recommendations will be made to the entire board for their consideration. On March 1st, we will, the, Deschutes County will be releasing a press release announcing the recruitment for Commissioner Swisher's forthcoming vacancy opportunity in Sisters Country. That recruitment will be posted for approximately four weeks, so we're trying to be prudent just to find a capable replacement for the board's consideration that will put us in a position, I presume, to have someone ready to go, you know, in, in May and/or June at the latest, again, following Commissioner Swisher's terming out. Two legislative updates, just to the extent that you might be interested. Senate Bill 1533, you might recall that it's, there's a number of elements in it that pertain to wildfire mitigation and whatnot. This, this bill contains the, will resolve the broken link that was discovered in Senate Bill 391 as it relates rural accessory dwelling units, as it relates to Senate Bill 762 and wildfire mitigation. That bill is, is scheduled before the House for a third reading, the Senate already recommended or approved adoption. The House, I presume, will do so as well, and then it will go to the governor's office for her signature. Again, just as a reminder, when this legislation is, is enrolled, it will put CDD in a position, about a year from now, a little less than a year, to be in a position to amend county code to take advantage of Senate Bill 391, which would allow rural accessory, eligible rural accessory dwelling units to be sited in rural Deschutes County. One more bill I think you might be interested in, House Bill 4118. This is the bill that was contemplating an ability to expedite UGB amendments for workforce housing if it was in relationship, if it was in an area that was designated as an urban reserve. This, this bill died and is no longer active, so there won't be an opportunity to take advantage of that legislation. Two more things, just to, as you look ahead in the month of March, I wanted to let you know that on March 10th, the planning commission will have a work session to talk about our, the community development department's draft, draft work plan and annual accomplishments. The hearing for our annual work, for our fiscal year work plan will be scheduled for March 24th. So, we typically hold a work session and then at a separate meeting, conduct a public hearing, and if the pass is any indication, the planning commission has left the record open for another week, and so deliberations would occur, assuming that pattern follows suit for this year. Deliberations and a recommendation with the board would happen on April, I believe it's April 14th. Other, just as I look at the, at the calendar, heading into, heading into early summer, I may have mentioned this, but I want to, I'm sorry, I just want to repeat it. The Board of County Commissioners is interested in a, in a joint meeting with, with the planning commission sometime in June, so that's just a placeholder. We'll see how their schedule and the planning commission's schedules align, but you can pencil that in, that in June or possibly July, if there was a scheduling conflict, there's a desire to have a joint work session with the planning commission to talk about just the relationship. This is something that typically occurs annually, we, I can't remember the last time we did it, it may have been a, a year ago in January, but it's a great conversation, a great opportunity to engage both the planning commission with the elected officials. Of course, as Peter Russell just highlighted, there's a lot of work, work projects that are going to be before the planning commission, and certainly opportunities for individual commissioners to have an active role in, in various planning projects. And then the last thing, just something to begin thinking about as our community maybe no longer has to wear masks in indoor settings, as we think about getting into the spring months of April and May. Let us know if, if and when commissioners are ready to, to attend these meetings in person. We can, there's no pressure, there's no rush, of course, it's, it's dependent on each commissioner's own comfort zone, but when there are commissioners that are interested in attending, we can, you know, prepare for some dinners beforehand and ensure that you're well-fed before these forthcoming meetings. So, something to think about again, and with some advance notice, we can execute those logistics to, to, do I dare say, convene pre-COVID in a way that allows all of us commissioners and staff to talk informally before these meetings. So, that's it for me, thank you.
Peter, I have a question. When, how much advance notice do you currently need if people want to attend in person, or I guess I should say, how much is desirable to, if we want to start coming?
I think, you know, ideally, a week prior to the meeting. If, if schedules change, I'd say a few days, just to allow us to organize, you know, get the, the Armin room situated and to, to order, you know, some, some food, but I would say anywhere between, you know, ideally, a seven-day heads-up would be greatly appreciated, and, and then we can execute that accordingly.
Is that currently, even though we're not doing food, a full week is still really helpful, or would that just be once we start doing food again?
I think, once, once there's a, do I dare say, if there's a, it seems like this is a pattern of, you know, where commissioners are going to be coming regularly, I don't think we need that advance notice, we can just plan for it and we can almost flip it around, please let us know if you're not going to be attending, and, you know, it just helps us order food. But I know, I'll just speak for myself, I, I look forward to seeing any and all of you in person, it's been a long time, and I, I miss those informal conversations that we had in the Allen or, or DeArmin rooms, so, or Lyons, I should say, or DeArmin rooms. So, we can just play it by ear, but as we head in and people are expressing more, more comfort, we can, if, if we can get a week, week's notice, just help us organize the rooms and, and, and plan the food accordingly. But we're, at the end of the day, we're going to be very flexible if schedules change.
Thank you. Who is next from staff?
Chair, that would be me, this is Will Groves for the record, and I don't have a lot for you this evening, I know we're about to head in the eight o'clock hour, so I'll keep it relatively brief. I just wanted to give you an update on the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan update, the interviews, of course, Commissioner Kieris, you're well, well familiar that we're doing those interviews today, we did one today and we're doing two more tomorrow, so we're making good progress towards selecting a consultant, and that's a big part of us getting that project underway. We have some dynamic proposals that we've received and are really excited about each of the teams that have offered to do this work, so I'm just really excited to get started on that. And that's the, that's the main thing I wanted to cover for you this evening.
Great, thank you. Tarek, do you have any staff comments to share?
I do not have any further staff comments, thank you very much, Chair Kieris.
Okay, are there any other staff present?
There are none in the room, that's us now.
Okay, great. All right, let's move on to planning commission comments. Does anyone have any announcements, comments, Commissioner Swisher?
I just wanted to make a very brief comment about how outstanding I felt the water panel was tonight, learned a lot, and I think the upgrading of the scientific information from the first time we did panels was really, really good, so really appreciate the work staff put in the, getting this put together. And my second comment is, regardless of the food situation, I had planned on starting to attend at our next meeting and through the spring. Now, if there's another COVID surge or something, I might reconsider, but basically, I do plan on being in person at the planning commission meetings from now on.
I will most likely be coming in person at the next meeting, but I will confirm that with staff sometime in the next week or so. Commissioner Williams?
I'm not sure if you're speaking, but you are on mute?
I am speaking and I was on mute. I agree with Commissioner Swisher, I've lived here for over 20 years, and I learned a lot about our water tables tonight, something I think I can take to my community and help them make more educated decisions, and I apologize that I've had no video, I found out that it is completely gone, does not even list on my computer, so I'm not sure that I've been malwareed or what, but I will be present next time, so I do apologize about that.
All right, other planning commissioner comments? Okay, I also do not have any further comments, so at 7:59, I will adjourn the meeting.